I will call the February 24th meeting of the Aberdeen City Council to order. As you can see, Mayor Shoneman is not with us this evening and as Deputy Mayor, I have the honor to preside over the meeting tonight. Carl, the roll call please.
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronane.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Rife.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bunsonus.
Here. First order is pledge allegiance, please stand.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of February 18th?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Olson, second by Rux. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. Open forum, we have Mark Hardy from HR Green here to present tonight, but Mr. Braun is going to introduce them.
Yes, back in May, we interviewed and selected HR Green out of Sioux Falls to develop a facility plan for us to address potential future growth needed as well as any current events at the plant that we could improve and make better. They've been great to work with, they're working, going back and forth, they're willing to work with us out of the box to come up with alternatives that are fit with what we have and not, and just, fit with what we have and make it, and, how do I say this? We like to improvise sometimes, so, we don't want to have something sitting there empty, so they're willing to work with us and we don't want to build just new, why don't we repurpose some of these things? So they've been great to work with that, they're here to give you a rough introduction or executive summary, they have a part paper copy for you, as well as I believe you might have gotten a digital copy, and they'll talk about what they think we know at the plant. There's some big things involved for the future that we have to decide on, and then there's also some smaller things that we're currently working on and addressing, and it helps that they've developed us, we've developed a timeline to address the smaller incidents and things. So, here's Mark Hardy and Sam Carter from HR Green.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, there we go.
Yes, we can.
Alright, thank you, thank you for the opportunity to summarize some of our findings and recommendations. I think we can, Bob gave a good introduction, so I think we can just jump right in. The water treatment facility plan, we kind of looked at it from a holistic, from a high level and kind of went from there and dug down in the details, but kind of the intent of it is to provide you all with a planning tool to give you a little bit of, looking at the crystal ball a little bit to see what's coming up, but also to kind of look at some of the needs and issues that they have now, so kind of put all that together and kind of develop a plan going forward to help you manage future growth and maybe other industries that may be coming to town or whatever, to give you a roadmap to follow. On this initial slide, just kind of keep that in the back of your mind, this is a solids contact unit or a SCU, it's kind of the engine that runs the plant, your plant has two of these, but we're going to refer to this a couple times, so just take a mental snapshot of that. So we'll run through a little bit of the project development, how it all came together, and then, of course, we got to look at water demands, historical and in the future, and then kind of summarize some of the, like Bob said, the big capacity upgrades as well as some other operational concerns that need addressing to give the plant more operational redundancy and optimize and reduce costs, those type of things that are just needed at any plant. And just kind of summarize some of the alternatives that we looked at, and then kind of lay out a potential implementation and schedule and opportunity for questions at the end. So we took a little bit different approach with this project because there was a lot of, it's a retrofit of an existing plant, there's a lot of nuances that go with an existing plant, so it's important that we were able to spend some time there, so we essentially camped out there for three days, three engineers from, well actually, there's five engineers, we also had an electrical engineer and a structural engineer spent a day there, just looking at some of the older buildings and kind of giving us a confidence that we can, with a little O and M or upgrade those buildings, those old buildings could still be used going forward. So we had kind of a double check, reality check with the structural and electrical and a control engineer was there, but then we had three process engineers that we just spent there, and we'd meet with city staff and kind of brainstorm some ideas and meet again, and we'd had lunch with all the operators and kind of gathered some of their feedback, so just kind of immersed ourselves in the plant for three days and we found that that was a good way to really get our hands around some of the operational data and just how the plant operates, and we weeded out a lot of alternatives that don't make sense, but like Bob said, we talked about what units we could repurpose or, and then also down the road when we have a capacity upgrade, can we still use that same concept, so a lot of that back and forth was hammered out in that, in that three-day workshop. From there, we, whenever we look at a treatment plant and look down the road, we look at, we look back to kind of look how the plant's operated in the past and look at some of those ups and downs, the wet years, the dry years, and get a feel for how things are operating at the plant and what the demands look like. So this table just shows that over the past 10 years, there's been some fluctuations, but there's definitely an increasing water demand in both the average and the maximum day demands that we're seeing. So once those historical demands have kind of been established, and we picked 2017 was a representative year, it's pretty recent, so it captured some of the growth that we've seen recently, but it also seemed to be pretty representative of the trend that we had. And from there, we can kind of take a snapshot of the population at that time and the demand at that time and come up with per capita usage, so we look at that, kind of an average day demand, which is, is, takes into account the low winter flows and the high summer flows and kind of, it normalizes it, and it's helpful to look at that on a year-to-year basis to kind of see if your plant's generally going up or staying the same or going down. Again, we saw that trend was increasing. Another, probably a little more important or as important is the maximum month production, that's a 30-day period where typically it happens in July or August, where you have a high consecutive 30-day period where your plant's producing that at a consistent level for many days straight. And then the third gray line there, the maximum day production, that's the highest day that we see in any given year, it's kind of an outlier a lot of times, but it is sometimes a forecaster of what's to come that you start to get more and more of those maximum days, it's telling the future that you're creeping up and it's kind of the worst-case scenario. But the system can usually handle that and shave off those peaks with storage out in the distribution system, and then we always have the card to play that if we have to implement lawn watering restrictions or things like that, you guys have that tool at your disposal, that you can kind of temper those maximum day, once-in-awhile type things if they, if we do happen to get a stretch of a couple of weeks worth of dry weather or whatnot, but so the maximum month is kind of pretty telling. And then down in the yellow, the additional industrial demand is kind of a difference-maker for you guys, if there are some additional industries that, you know, we've, the city's been approached about some possibilities of some industries down the line, and you know, if that were to occur, industry is more of a, it's a constant week-to-week, it kind of tends to just add on to your existing demand and, because it doesn't really slow down, you know, residential demand slows down when everybody goes to work and then it peaks back up at supper time and it's high when they take a shower in the morning, but industrial demand tends to, tends to be more even and adds to the baseline demand. So we take some of those, that 2017 data, then we prorated it into 2030 and 2045 to kind of come up with a projection, this, the graph on the right-hand side of the screen there, that's taken straight out of the comp plan that the city did in 2019, we didn't reinvent the wheel there, we just took that population projection that y'all had done previously and we used that as our population projections going forward. So this next graph kind of illustrates now how those demands kind of interact with your plant capacity. So it's important that we have, the maximum plant capacity is what your plant can produce at and effectively treat the water and meet regulations, so we've established that at around 10.5 MGD, that's on the left-hand side, and then as time goes on, we're, is on the Y-axis. But another important thing to think about with your plant is the firm capacity. Early on, when I started, I said that you had those two clarifiers, there's two SCUs, those are the engine that runs your plant and you have two treatment trains, you have two of those SCUs. But when we look at a plant, we have to keep in mind that sometimes that equipment has to be down for maintenance or cleaning or repairs or anything, when you have a whole plant full of mechanical equipment, you're going to have mechanical failures that are going to cause you problems. So you have to look at what happens if one of those go down, we need to have a backup, we have to have a redundant treatment, so right now you do have a redundant treatment train, but it, each one of those is worth, has a capacity of six MGD, so if you, if one of them goes down, your capacity goes down to six MGD. And the, so now this takes a look at the, that maximum day demand is the top line, the maximum month is the middle diagonal line, and then the average day is your, is the bottom line. And there's a couple rule of thumb, number one, you want to have your average day demand, the blue line, you want to keep that below your firm capacity, because on a typical day, if one treatment train goes down, you can, you can keep things going, but in the summertime, you don't have, it's not cost-effective to have all that backup redundant capacity, so the rule of thumb is your maximum month, you need to keep that below your maximum capacity. And then your average day, that top, or the peak day, or your maximum day is those outliers that we can kind of mitigate that, so you can see here, we're starting to cross the line of that, that max day and the maximum capacity in that 20-30 range, so it's getting closer, but we're not that concerned about that, those max day demands, because we can mitigate that. But what happens in this next slide is, when we start adding that potential industrial demand, and here we've just arbitrarily drew it in at 2030, I don't, there's no real reason for that, it's just somewhere down in the future, a few years out, but you can see if we had some industrial demand come in, it bumps everything up, and now both our firm capacity has exceeded and our maximum, and our maximum capacity is exceeded if some industries decide to come to town. You'll note on the, on kind of the left-hand, the thinner bar, that's the, that's the industrial demand from AGP, that's already been, they've started operations last summer, so that's, they're in that .4 to .5 range right now, so we've, it's not really, it was in our trend data before, so we put it, we added it to our demands, so that's, shows that that's already happened, and then another two MGD is out there that could be added, and if that does, if that does go, you're running into capacity issues at your plant. So now, I'm going to kind of transition into some of what, some of those bits and pieces look like in those capacity upgrades, this first grouping is adding that second train that I talked about, that solids contact unit or SCU is in there, the actiflow basin is kind of a pre-treatment to that, and then kind of the number two most important component in your plant is the filters, and then the clear well that holds that water before you pump it, but the filters are critical in this as well, and to be honest with you, the filters kind of drove this whole project, because back when you did the improvements in 2005, filters were recommended and were there as kind of the next phase to do, and those, right now you have eight filters and four of those filters sit in a building that's over 85 years old, so there's some age to that building, and there's some concern that, that, you know, that building is, over time, going to continue to degrade, so it makes a lot of sense to get the filters back in a newer building to match what the other treatment process is in the 2005 building, to get those closer in age with each other, so they just are a little bit better matched going forward for the years ahead. So this capacity upgrade includes building that new, that new treatment train along with the lime and soda ash, those are important chemical feed systems with the large silos that sit on the roof, there's a lot of steel and nuts and bolts and concrete to go with getting that, that third, I guess, actually, I think I might have said second train, it's this third treatment train up and running. And while we're, while we're doing this, it makes sense to add some taste and odor provisions to the plant. Aberdeen has a unique situation where, even though I said that those filters were in an old building, there's still life left in that building, and we could potentially repurpose that old building into polishing filters that help with the taste and odor removal, and the reason that we can justify putting it into that old building is if we did get a heavy snowfall and partially, part of the roof fell in and caused those filters to come online, we could simply bypass those polishing filters for the taste and odor and still be able to treat water just like we are today. So it's a less critical path type of treatment, and we spent a lot of time talking about whether we should retrofit that old building or not, but, but in the end, it does make some cost-effective sense to, you know, maintain that building and keep it going and reuse it for the GAC filters to make, to really buy down the cost of the taste and odor improvements. And then there's, but I wanted to, just real quickly, there's a few items, so this gets us up to the, around an 18 MGD capacity that, with that third treatment train, but there are a couple things that we, we've decided to defer until a later time, they don't really, they're not urgently needed now and they can be done later on, like for example, the lime holding lagoons, we have some de-watering lines that we're going to look, that we think if we remove some of the groundwater, they'll improve the effectiveness of those lagoons and buy some more life into those lagoons, so we're going to see what happens if we do a few of those de-watering lines, and if we can optimize the holding lagoons and maybe defer that cost of doing anything with the, kind of the solids that we gather, the waste from the treatment plant. And then there's some other things that, these don't require quite as much steel and concrete to add another pump, the low lift pumps, there's a slot for another pump that we'll eventually have to add, but we don't need it right now, but could relatively easily be added later. And then there's some well-filled improvements that you're, that you're all doing in a separate study, that really isn't under our scope, but those, costs of those improvements will sometimes are going to eventually need to be implemented and help with your overall water source capacity and redundancy, and give you another source of water other than the Elm River. So then, like Bob mentioned, there's the big capital upgrade, but then there's also numerous kind of chemical feed things that, that were, that needs to be done to improve the redundancy and reliability of the plant and reduce costs, and it's just time for some of these things to be done, so there's just several chemical feed systems, and I already mentioned the lime solids handling, and getting another basin, the reclaimed basin will allow the filters to operate better if we can get more capacity for them, for a basin to send the backwash wastewater, and it just helps them be able to clean their filters faster and get the filters back online faster after they're backwashed. And then here's another grouping of different chemical feed improvements and clear well and high-service pumping, right now, on the bottom there, clear well and high-service pump improvements, right now, your high-service pumps sit in one clear well, you don't have a real way of diverting to another basin and still keep pumping, so if you ever need to, if Bob ever needs to de-water that clear well to clean it out or replace any valve or a bracket on the pump, suction gets broke or needs fixing, he has very limited options to where he can take that basin down, get in there, but can still keep pumping, because he only has one clear well. So we spent quite a bit of time trying to figure out how we can repurpose another basin to give him two basins to pick from and pump from, and just give him a backup, a backup plan if he does need to get into that clear well. So there's a lot of that, that we talked about, to just make it so he doesn't get in a pinch where some mechanical failure causes him to greatly reduce production, he needs to have some backup plans available to him. So now we're kind of getting into the nuts and bolts of the, of the study and the different alternatives we looked at, we, these alternatives, these different buckets or groups, kind of started out early on, even in the proposal, Bob and his staff indicated, these are the things that, that we need to look at, so we just kind of carried it through, all the way through the study, so anything with a 1 in front of it has to do with capacity increase, and anything with a 2 in front of it has to do with chemical feed and so on. I don't have time to go through all of these, but this just gives you a sampling of all the different things we looked at, most of these included a concept sketch, some pros and cons that went along with it, and some cost estimates to kind of help make decisions on which ones should be a priority, which ones we should dismiss, which one we should spend, spend money on. So with that, we took all those improvements and developed a priority list and tried to do the higher priority items first, and then spread it out over about five years' time, and, and just clicked off the projects as we go over the next several years. You can see this first grouping is for 2020 and 2021, and the ones in green over on the right are the ones that we're, we're checking off out of the whole summary of the operational needs. And it should be noted that these costs include, these are what they would cost if a contractor did the work, and also if there was engineering and construction service and construction engineering associated with it. So these costs are on the high side, because Bob and his, his crew is going to, they're going to tackle a lot of these on their own, they have the capacity and the expertise to, to replace some of these chemical feed pumps and the bulk tanks and do some of the smaller diameter piping and whatnot, so he's going to plow through a lot of these, not all of them, he may have to get some help on some of them, but he's going to tackle a lot of them, so these prices are starting out on the high side, and I think he's going to be able to construct or get them installed for, for less than this. Here's another, the next grouping of projects for the next three years, and we're, the more turn green, so we're getting more checked off. You notice that we didn't do the solids contact unit, that there's some operational concerns with that, but we're deferring that until the capacity upgrade, it doesn't make any sense for us to tackle that and just wait for that third treatment train to get constructed. And then there's, we identified some concerns with the treated water transmission main going from the plant into town, but there's some additional study that's needed, and we need to kind of combine what some of the future upgrades are out in the distribution system before we do anything with that treated water transmission main, it needs to be kind of paired up with the distribution systems. And another thing to note is we increased these costs each year, they started out as 2020 costs, but we added about a 3% inflationary markup for every year, so 2025 will have five years of inflation marked up, so they're actually $20, $25 that you're seeing in this, in this table. And then we get to 2026 is the, is the big number, the capacity upgrade where we're adding all the basins and the concrete, that includes, those are project costs, that includes engineering and all the, and the contractor installed, that's going to be more, with the concrete and the steel, that's going to be more than Bob's guys can do. So, and again, that's a 2026, and the reason that we, one of the main reasons that we picked 2026 was, that's the first year that's available where the old debt service from the 2005 improvements are retired at that point, so that was kind of the, the goal was to wait till that, those improvements got paid off before we added the new debt service.
Is that the building done now, is that really 30 years?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a new, basically new buildings, and new, with the treatment train, it's those big clarifiers and all the before and after that's needed and the chemical feeds that goes along with it, and so it gets us from that 12 MGD to 18 MGD, we 50% increase in capacity essentially. So this, this drawing shows, so in the lower right, in the southeast corner, that's your new building, which was constructed in 2005, and you can see that we're adding a new SCU on the east side and new filters and taste and odor equipment on kind of the southeast corner of that, so we're getting a lot of the main treatment process all in one building. And then over on the west side, we're still using some of the old building and putting, you can see we're putting the GAC filters in where the old filters are now, and we're reusing some of that old building for fluoride feed and a chlorine, a disinfection, kind of the treating the water, hitting it one last time before it goes into the distribution system with our chemical feed systems. And then we're adding some more clarifier or another clear well out there as well, that's actually repurposing an old secondary clarifier into a, into a new clear well. So now, looking kind of at a high level, looking at costs and what it looks like to, if we went forward with some of this work, this is taken from a, another consultant did a water rate study for several communities in this area, so we just took that data that Robin had available to him and, and kind of plugged in where you are now, which is the red bar, at, for roughly 6,000 gallons of water, typical water bill's about $33 a month for 6,000 gallons of water, and you can kind of see how you, how you compare to other, these are surface water treatment plants in the area, and you can see you're relatively to the left-hand side, the lower-hand side of water bills when you compare it to other folks. And then when we go and add in the, take, so this, I want to make it And then when we go and and add in the take, so this, I want to make it clear that I didn't, this isn't a, I didn't do a a water rate study or anything. This is just a very rough stab at kind of what it would look like at our $33 million price tag. Took out your old debt service and put in our new debt service, which is higher, and and did a couple other simple assumptions. And this is kind of where you fall relative to others. I mean, it's very common that after you do a project, you kind of leapfrog. You go up on the list after you do a project, and then as years go by, you kind of make yourself, you make your way to the left as other people do in projects and raise rates. So this doesn't take into account, for example, the additional revenue that might come in if from those industries, or if you have cash on hand. I didn't do any of those type of to buy down that that cost. So this is very rough, just, but what it tells me is it, you know, by waiting till 2026 and plugging in that new debt service, it 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 kind of, you know, softens the blow definitely with with what what you were paying before and adding on to it. And another thing to keep in mind is, since I inflated our costs, the the other people to the left of you will, in the next six years, most likely have a rate increase in there, so they're gonna move to the right as well. So that's just a a quick and dirty kind of what things might look like if you took on a a large project like that compared to other rates in the area. And then lastly, just a a little bit of timeline, kind of implementation. This is, we went through this already, but over the next five years, these are just projects that we're gonna try to to check off as we go, kind of getting ready for that 2026 timeline. And then, so those kind of cover the operational concerns, and then this is the capacity expansion. With SRF, to it to go through the environmental clearances and the public comment period, it typically takes, you know, nine to 12 months to kind of get through that process. So we're, you know, likely consider maybe starting that process in 2024 to get through that. And then in 2025, potentially start design and get a bidding could potentially happen in early 2026. And then we, with this type of project, we anticipate, you know, likely two construction seasons to get it all done. So that would get you to 2027, the end of the construction season in 2027 to have your plan online and up and running. And so this is just a a concept and can for certain be adjusted, but it's just a conceptual timeline that you might want to look at and kind of reminding you that it takes time for that funding, and it takes time to to build it, of course, a project of that size. So that I kind of wanted to get through that in a short amount of time and not take your whole council meeting up, but.
You did take our the whole council. We're done. Are there any questions for H R Green? So the 2.5 MGD industrial demand increase, how many industries is that?
Well, it's two.
Two. So A G P had 0.5. How how much does the beef plant take?
That was an expansion there. We allocated approximately 0.5. Is that right? 0.7 to 1.
So you're projecting two industries for that 2.5 when we don't.
Or there's actually three, the, so AG, it's actually three if you count A G P's for the whole 2.5 and then two for the remaining two.
Egg businesses?
We had one, 1 million gallon per day for the biodiesel, right? And then another 0.7 to 1, like Bob mentioned, for the for the beef plant.
That was not counting any new businesses?
Yeah, that we we kind of focused on kind of the best information that we had on on hand. And so there's no blue sky, or there could be blue sky in there too for something else.
So how much does odor and taste add to the price tag?
Yeah, there's some, there's a couple of different options on how to go there, but in general, it's four to $6 million. He's a round number.
So how many, how many times in a year do we have complaints about our odor and taste?
Anytime you bring up the subject of water.
Sometimes the complaints are more noticeable than when it's not as noticeable. So I mean, when we get a lot of complaints, of course, when things anyone can tell.
So does the transmission line have anything to do with odor and taste?
No, we don't feel that that's a, no. It's more on the on the raw side.
Yeah, actually, I'd like to ask the question that the deputy mayor is asking differently. Are there any components here that are really optional?
Well, I mean, that's a pretty loaded question, depending how much risk you wanna take on or how how much you want to be, I mean, you could always wait for the, I mean, we made projections on when those industries have come. So you can always wait until there's more something concrete, and that's gonna actually drive.
No, you persuaded me that we need to, we need to expand our supply. I I get that. We need to be able to supply it, but but that isn't the entire, that's not the entire project. Are there parts of this that are things we ought to want, but we don't necessarily need, is what I'm asking?
Yeah, the, I think, I guess I will say this, that that Bob and his 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 crew has done an outstanding job kind of making making do with with what he has and and not not letting those wants kind of overtake the show. And so I don't feel that there's, yeah, there's not a lot there that's kind of a want. It's it's pretty justifiable, the the things that we come up with to to provide that reliability that it's, you don't want to have too much risk out there, that you don't want to have to make that call to so you can't use water, you know, you can't use water from this time to this time because we gotta work on the plant.
No, you you made a good argument for redundancy, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
It's been a really interesting presentation. I'm looking on page six at the annualized recommended improvements and noticing 2026, the items quoted in blue. And I recognize the need for future growth and accommodating new customers in our market for the SCU number three. But how much is of this projected balloon cost that really hits us hard in 2026 can be attributed to the machinery or hardware for the SCU number three in that building?
Yeah, I mean, that's where the majority of the cost comes from, is just you have, you know, you have an upper level, you have your main basin, and then you have a level underneath where the piping is. There's just a lot of concrete and heavy, hard construction to build those basins and and put those equipment in there. And then and then the filters, again, are just a very large building with a lot of individual concrete basins and a lot of equipment and pumps and under drains and valves and piping. So, yeah, it's a lot of bricks and mortar, I would call it, and just to get a foundation and then the equipment costs to put to put in there. Am I am I answering your question?
I think so, but not specifically is what I was hoping. Just, you know, you were showing us the picture on the cover page, page one.
Right.
And so we're adding something like that.
Correct.
Yeah, I was just curious what that, what we're seeing in that picture. I mean, I understand the cost of building out and what walls and and cement can be. You know, we've done this or had other customers come in and do this before. But just curious on the actual machinery that operates on page one.
Yeah, there, that, I mean, that's, that's the, one of the key components is that SCU, and you have a sludge mechanism, you know, it's a, you know, what the dimensions of that basin are. It's 70 feet in diameter. It's a, it's a big basin with big sheets of steel that collect the, that that direct the water and collect the sludge.
Right, I remember touring in 2005, so yeah, I have seen it, yeah.
If I may say, we have the actual report, we'll have, there's a pretty good breakdown for those costs in the actual report. Do you want me to get that available to you?
That was what you were looking for, is cost of that equipment?
Yeah, the equipment.
Yeah, we have an item in our appendix, we have itemized lists of what what's equipment, what's concrete, what's building, and so I'll give you, definitely give you a better idea.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lindman?
Since we increased the capacity, you know, basically by 50%, does this include transmission lines, any type of capacities that we have to increase? Or can what we have currently do that? It just seems like our current pipe, and you add 50% more, you'd have to put it somewhere or be able to haul, you know, transport it somehow.
Yeah, there's, for the for the most part, because the distribution system is networked and you have pipes going in a lot of different directions, and you can fill the tower during the night, for example, and and bring water from the towers during the day and pump.
Right, I understand that, but are we at a point with our current infrastructure to be be able to handle that? Or are we looking at another tower, more more lines, bigger lines, or or are we where we need to be?
Yeah. How many million gallons a day can the transmission line from the plant? How much water can we push through that? There's two lines, right?
There is two lines. And the actual size of those mains are pretty good sized mains. They're they're operated at a low pressure right now, and we're entertaining some ideas of increasing the pressure in those lines and kind of turn them into high service lines where we could pressurize the outskirts of town, especially on the northeast quadrant. That's an idea that we talked about, but we didn't quite dive into it in a lot of detail because we need, that's, there's another, the other component to all that, and to answer your question too, is I recommend that their, a distribution system study be done to look at some of those things and and do a model of the system to help look for any bottlenecks that are out there.
So at this time, if I'm hearing you right, you're, we don't know if we currently have enough to sustain if we increase by 50%. Is that, am I hearing you right?
Yeah, I don't, maybe Robin can answer this a little bit better than I because it's just, he has a lot better background on the distribution side. I don't know there's any glaring deficiencies that I noticed just from, without actually diving into it. But but at the same time, I think it's worth looking at.
We do know there's some trends on the east side of town.
Especially that northeast part where we've got A G P and and molded fiberglass, that there's likely going to have to be an additional tower. And we gave those numbers a few years ago, and that was in a $4 million range to put in a tower. And, you know, those are, those are all big numbers that, like Mark said, we we really should do a study. You just don't want to throw a tower up and hope for the best. We're gonna need to to do some additional study to make sure that things are put in the right spot where we need them and when we need them, so.
True, and that that's my question is because if we, these are big numbers and and without knowing the full, what, $33 million project turned into a $37 million project or bigger, if we have to put transmission lines in, it's gotta be taken into consideration.
I notice that you did a lot of work on the capacity expansion based upon the infrastructure. Did you think about what it was gonna do from a manpower perspective? Am I looking at three more employees, four more employees that'll be part of the annualized cost because of the increase of loans?
Yeah, there, I think over time, you you may seen, see an increase, but I I think it's it's gonna be gradual. And I don't, I think eventually you're gonna need more staff, but I think it'll happen over enough time where you can kind of incorporate it with what he's got.
I'll give more attribute to the draw on the demand. Okay.
And as a plant has to get more, more equipment operating, you might need another staff to help keep more pieces of equipment maintenance on that.
Councilmember Rex?
Robin, how much was the plant in 2005 when we did the upgrades? Was, I keep, I keep thinking 16 million.
16 million's a good rough number, yeah.
So basically, in 20 years, it's doubled, pretty much. I mean, we're basically, like I say, adding 50% capacity. But I remember at one point that our current filters were 1930s.
Two different sets, yeah.
Two different sets. And and so those have basically been in pretty much continuous operation since the 1930s.
Yeah, over 85 years old building, yeah.
Yeah, so, and like I say, the new filters, I know, was something that, when we came on, was something that was discussed that would need to be done at some point because that that could be a bottleneck for capacity.
Keep, keep in mind that with with the project that we're talking about, we're not only doing the 12 MGD filters, but we're also adding another 6 MGD for what we built back in 2005. So we're taking the filters from 12 MGD to to 18 MGD new, plus another third treatment train. So we're adding more than what we did back in 2005.
And and it was, just one last thing, you know, if you would have sat there and told us in 2005 that, you know, you'd have to look at this again in 2006, we probably would have shook our heads a little bit. But this is actually a good problem to have. And actually, this is a lot cheaper than what a lot of communities have had to do around South Dakota. I know Yankton had a huge project that was just astronomical on cost because they really had no choice, peers now doing it, and theirs is really high just because of what they have to do. So having that 2005 building probably does save us a lot of money than going and starting from scratch.
Did you notice Yankton was the very far right?
Yeah, yeah, I think theirs was, what, 60 or 70 million or something like that, so.
So Lynn, how would you propose a rate increase for the $4.73 that they're looking at? The increase, how would, how would we do that over the next six years? Would we wait for the big project, or would we be stair stepping that along the way?
You can go either way, whatever way you're comfortable with.
If the fact you stair step it then, I think that we, I wouldn't want to create a new account, but I would like you to understand that we would set up a specific reserve and so people could see, you know, how that reserve is going in and with the regular operation. So you could see if we're actually meeting the needs of meeting our reserve.
Councilmember Renee?
Carl's got some suggestions too.
You know, and so Lynn, I guess, you know, my next question, similar, on a similar vein, would be, do we really wait six years to do this? I mean, we're with historically low interest rates. If interest rates double or triple, which they could certainly do in in six years, have we missed an opportunity to to bond this? Are you an economist? I forgot. A gambler, maybe.
Not after what I saw happen today. It makes a big difference with that payoff on the loan as to the need to, when you look at his capacity impact to water rate on page seven, that impact on annual expenses relatively low. It's only 988,000 versus being, you know, 2 million as to what the total amortization payment would be. And so that keeps your weight fairly low, where you're within the middle margin. Maybe you could go at it in two ways. Maybe you could do incremental increases in the next five years and then. next five years, and then do a larger increase when the actual time comes from demand where it's not such a shock, but I don't know if I would issue complete debt right now.
Yeah, I, I'd be reluctant to as well, but I, I think I'm also worried about the, what, what's going to happen in six years if we're, if, if the economy is completely different.
Right, I mean, based upon where, where conditions are today, you go from thirty-three dollars to thirty-seven dollars, I don't think that's gonna hurt anyone.
I agree.
On average, for six thousand gallons.
I agree, but when you did these projections, you did these based on what kind of an interest rate?
Uh, it was around two and a half?
Two point two.
Two point two five?
Historically low, I mean, incredibly low, even at three and a half percent, we're talking about entirely, an entirely different kind of number.
You're right.
Let's, Carl, did you have some comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, in the similar vein that we were discussing before, I wanted to clarify, the improvements that you're indicating here in years 2020 through 2025, approximately three million dollars, but you're saying that we would fund those either with current cash balances or with current revenue streams, because the thirty-three million in year 2026 is the amount that you're showing as the SRF loan, so I just wanted to be sure that that was the point, and it might play into the question on when and how much do we change rates?
But Bob was gonna do a lot of that work by himself, so we're gonna save all that three million dollars by him doing the work.
Well, we, we do have adequate reserves to cover that three million in the next five year period, but then it's just that much less that you could put forward towards the construction project in 2026.
Councilmember Rux?
You know, I was getting to the, I was gonna do the same thing, Rob, is, you know, is it better to do it now, but I don't think there's enough money, but I think if we stair step the rates, we develop cash on hand, where now it's not thirty-three million we take out a loan for, it might only be thirty million, which would create, and we, they did sort of the same thing the last time, as they bumped up rates, well, they hadn't had a lot of increase, so they bumped them up, but they bumped them up beforehand, so it wasn't such a big shock, and they did have some cash on hand to do some of the work, but you, if you start now, you could build up that fund, not only pay cash for some of the improvements, but we would have a cash balance on hand where some of those could lessen the blow.
Any other questions? We do have Tom from Dougherty in the audience, maybe he could predict what interest rates are gonna be in six years. He's not saying anything. All right, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to old business, ordinance number twenty dash oh-two-oh-one, ordinance relating to the issuance of additional non-add vortilerium sales tax revenue bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed four million two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to pay the cost for the softball complex, this is time for possible second reading and final adoption of ordinance twenty dash oh-two-oh-one, is there a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Renee, second by Remley. Anything new this week? You save any more money this week?
Never.
Okay, any questions, comments from the council? Hearing that, all those in favor, roll call. Roll call. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is consent calendar, need a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Moved by Rux, second by Olson, any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, motion carries. Moving to new business, item A, airport lease number seventy-five, agreement with SkyWest Airlines for 2020 to 2022, possible approval and authorize the city manager to sign airport lease number seventy-five, agreement with SkyWest Airlines, is there a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Remley, second by Johnson, Rich.
Late this afternoon, I did receive the signed copy from SkyWest Vice President Greg Woolley, so I delivered that to Lynn's office today.
And I believe Lynn provided us some information a couple weeks ago regarding this, so any comments or questions from the council?
One question, does it look like the CRJs will continue the two hundred throughout this, I mean, three year period?
For the near term.
Yeah, this term, okay.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, motion carries. Item B, twenty twenty-one promotion allocation and commitment of twenty thousand to Aberdeen BMX, possible approval of recommendation extending contributions for an additional year 2021 to Aberdeen BMX in the amount of twenty thousand to help fund capital outlay costs for the national BMX event in Aberdeen. Lynn, you and Carl had, did some analysis on this, and this is the recommendation that you brought back?
Yes, we have very little cash on hand, and we would like to save what cash we have for cash flow operations, and so that's why we recommended the extension of additional year.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, motion by Olson, second by Johnson, questions, comments?
Question on, on this is, you know, we're gonna give them twenty twenty-one money, are we giving them this year? Because they kind of needed the money this year to do their improvements.
I think one of the, they gave us two options, one is to give them money this year, or to extend their contributions for a one year period, and Councilmember Renee, you were not here for that discussion, I believe, correct?
I, I, I remember, I thought in this discussion, they kind of wanted the money this year, so they wanted to know if they could get money from next year, this year to help pay for them, if I remember correctly.
I guess I didn't understand it that way, anyone else in the council understand it that way? No. You had a question?
I honestly don't understand what we're doing, what, are you proposing that this is, that we are making a binding, we are binding ourselves in what we are doing with the promotional fund in 2021?
Yes, that you would make a commitment to extend, you know, right now, when, about two years ago, they came in and they had the capital outlay
Right.
project to build the track, and I think we gave them twenty thousand for each year for, was it two or three year period?
Eighty thousand.
Was it eighty? I thought it was a hundred.
They have since come back in because they're hosting a national event
Right.
and they do not have enough bleacher capacity, and they needed to do some improvements for their parking lot for lighting, so they came in and asked if in fact that the city would commit to additional year for twenty thousand dollars so they could cover those costs.
So are we at the end of, of our, of the commitment that we made? I didn't recall it that way.
Yes, you were at the end of your commitment for 2020.
I thought they had another year left.
I thought there was another year.
Oh, I thought, Carl, could you?
So is this for twenty-one, twenty-two, let's, because we would be approving, oh, this next cycle would be 2021.
So, so that would be my first question, is, yeah, if, if that's true, my second question would be if we are, if we are doing this, is this actually binding on us if we make a resolution, if, if we pass a, whatever we're passing a resolution, is that binding on us in, in the summer? Is that binding on us in the summer of 2021 even?
I guess it's still different than what you did at the Boys and Girls Club.
Or the Aberdeen Development Corp.
Or NSU.
Thanks.
I, I, I still, I would still think that, I would hope we would reach out to them because I, I still think they need the money this year, they didn't have enough money to do the project, they need to, to get the national tournament.
I got the impression that was just, can you extend the payment, or they could get the cash, and we would make payment.
Carl?
They did receive funding in 2017, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty would be the fourth year, I can't remember if it was a four year ask or a five year ask, that's...
Yeah, I thought it was a five year ask, but, you know, maybe we prolong this for one more week, get, get some of these questions answered.
I move to postpone.
Second.
Moved by Renee, second by Rux to postpone, item B for one week, correct?
Yes, that was a motion.
And do we have all the questions that we need to have answered to Carl or Lynn?
We will call to see if they're okay with just the extension of time for payments.
And what their understanding of, was it a four or five year commitment?
We might be able to find that if we have time to go back and look at 2017.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it was in their original application, sir.
True. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, motion carries. Item C, recommendation on bids for North Dakota Street roadway improvements, ST 2020 dash one, possible approval to award the bid, alternate A to re-construction in the amount of one million four hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents, and authorize the city manager and finance officer to sign all the necessary documents after approval by the city attorney, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Rex, second by Lunsman, Robin?
Well, well, the bid from Radiance came in a little bit under our engineer's estimate, it is below budget, we did have some other bids that came in on it, the biggest thing here is most of the bids that, that we received were for the option B, which is the side form, which is gonna be not the same ride quality that I've heard so much about over the years. So, you know, this, your best option is to get the slip forming, it's gonna, I think, gonna go much quicker, this is not gonna have much for utilities, so this actually will be a relatively quick process for us compared to most of our other projects, so.
Any questions from the council? Councilmember Rux?
Question on utilities, because the last thing I would like to do is have a nice roadway, and then of course have to cut into it because something breaks, like Sixth Avenue, not that that's new.
Yep.
Are the utilities on, underneath there, you feel fine, or?
They're rela-, most of them are relatively modern utilities, we would look at probably other alternatives, like slip lining for the sanitary sewer, storm sewer's relatively new in that area, we may look at different options for the, the section between Eighth and Fifteenth, but this is a relatively new section of roadway, so.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, motion carries. Item D, recommendation on bids for Fifteenth Avenue Southeast Storm Sewer Improvements, SS 2020 dash one, possible approval to award the bid to B&amp;B Contracting in the amount of one million fifty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-five cents, and authorize the city manager and finance officer to sign all the necessary documents after approval by the city attorney, is there a motion?
Move approval, second.
Moved by Olson, second by Rux, Robin?
Both bids came in under engineer's estimate, once again, this will be a section from, basically from State Street to Dakota Street, will turn the corner and, and move south on what would be the extension of Dakota Street, this is, once again, big pipe, and just like last year, this is gonna be highly dependent, construction wise, on what our weather is, if it's, remains wet like we had last summer, this will be a challenge, and they will probably push it off as late into the year as they can, we would like to see them do it when school's out, and that's how we have it set up right now.
Okay.
But there, there are some things we don't control here, so.
So this, I think Lynn said this is the last of this project?
Of this stretch.
This stretch?
It's the last of requirement injunction improvement
Okay, okay.
from the state.
We have, we have similar of the older pipe that's on the north side, we've done up to Third Avenue, we will need to go up to Ninth at some point in time, but yes.
Any comments, questions from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, motion carries. Item E, recommendation on bids for 2020 Asphalt Repair Mix, possible approval to award bid item number one to Jensen Rock and Sand in the amount of twelve thousand dollars, which is a hundred and twenty dollars per ton, award bid item number two to Jensen Rock and Sand in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred dollars, a hundred and fifteen dollars per ton, award bid item number three to Jensen Rock and Sand in the amount of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents per ton, and authorize the city manager and the finance officer to sign all necessary documents after approval by the city attorney, is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Renee, second by Lunsman, Robin?
This one's a little more confusing because you have identical bids from the two bidders for the actual asphalt work, I know Jeremy visited, I was out of town last week, but Jeremy did visit with Ron to make sure we were on firm standing with this, the contractor, the suppliers have both agreed to take what we will try to divvy up as a fair share, and this, this is advantageous for us because there are occasions where they're not producing, and it does give us the option of going at least to another supplier without maybe going sideways with the bid law because we'd be possibly going at a higher rate than what the original bid was at, but this does give us more options, and we'd recommend awarding to both contractors, or both suppliers, and we do want to have the option of at least being able to rent pavers and things like that as laid out in this as well.
So do, we don't need to approve item number five, the rental of the pavers, that pricing?
They will honor that pricing, and that actually stays below, you know, the, the bid limits and stuff, so I don't know that it is crucial that we do it, just that we have the understanding that if we need it, we don't, we don't use it unless we need it, but if we need it, we will do it under those unit prices.
So the two companies had the same exact price, and we went to them and asked them if they would share?
The option at that point was either we would do it by lottery, all or nothing, or we offered to split it in half, and they said they would do that.
Great, any, any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, motion carries. Item F, recommendation on 2020 road oil purchases, possible approval to award the quote of five hundred and sixty-five dollars and eight cents per ton to Flint Hills Resources Pine Ben LLC, and authorize the city manager and finance officer to sign all necessary documents after approval by the city man, attorney, is there a motion?
So moved.
Tag it.
Moved by Johnson, second by Remley.
This one's unusual also because we actually did not receive any bids, this is the second year in a row that we have not received bids, so at that point then, state law says that we've gone through our obligation as far as the bidding process, and we negotiate, we did check with the two suppliers, one was significantly higher than this, and last year's price, I believe, was five hundred and ninety dollars a ton, so we are under last year's price, this is a reasonable price for us, and, and we've worked with Flint Hills many years and, and recommend approval of that.
How come they don't bid every year? How come they force us to come talk to them?
They, they do not like the fa-, just the way the bid process is, they're a big enough company, we're small, small potatoes for their operation.
Okay. Comments or questions from the council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, motion carries. Item G, recommendation on bids for 2020 Seal Coat Aggregates, possible approval to award bid, option A in the amount of sixty thousand dollars, and bid option C in the amount of seventy-four thousand two hundred and forty dollars to Jensen Rock and Sand, and authorize the city manager and finance officer to sign all necessary documents after approval by the city attorney, got a lot of work this week, Ron?
My approval's pretty easy.
I don't know if we want to hear that.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Some moved.
Moved, second?
Second.
Moved by Johnson, second by Lunsman. Any comments, questions?
So Robin, the way this was bid out, then we'll continue to use granite chips on arterial streets?
That's correct.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. Uh, approval of bills listed for February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Remley, second by Lunsman. Any discussion on the bills? Roll call, Carl.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Renee.
Epstein.
Remley.
Aye.
Bunstness.
Aye. All right, uh, moving to city managers report. Lynn?
I have no oral report this evening.
Is there anything from the council? There is need, uh, going to executive session to consult legal counsel about contractual matters. Is there a motion to go in executive?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Renee, second by Rux. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. We're in executive session.